Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council for Monday, October ninth, two thousand seventeen. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Chris Gregson from the Valley Christian Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Chris here this evening?
I do not see him in the audience.
Okay. Does, is there anyone in the audience that would like to lead us in prayer? No one? Okay. Anyone on the council?
Fine.
You want to?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, let's go ahead and stand with me. Dear Almighty Father, thank you tonight for this meeting that you have given us the freedom to all come to and, and do the city's work as a council. Be with each one of us as council members, be with our city, be with our staff, be with our fire and police. May you bless the remainder of this night, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next, we will move to presentations. We have none this evening. Citizens' communication to council on matters not included on the agenda. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item, subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
Dave Pratt at Series. I believe that we need to bring on, for discussion sometime, about shopping carts and then bring on the agenda. I know we did something, you did something about signees because it's a nuisance and I believe shopping carts are a nuisance and we need to do something about it.
Okay. We currently have some, I don't know if you want to call them regulations related to shopping carts, so it sounds like you'd like to see some more enforcement of that.
Yeah, I find, I find, when I go for a bike ride, I'm finding carts miles away from, I have no idea how they get out that far and full of, full of trash and everything else and, and as too many of them wind up in the canals. We have one, one, well, actually, my wife told me that Ross's, they don't allow their carts out of, out of the, out of the store, period, but we only have one business, they have locking wheels. And I feel that when the, that new businesses, they need to have locking wheels and when they, when the other ones that start replacing them, the same thing. That way, that way, we're not going to find them all over the place.
Okay. Okay. I do have a speaker card here also from Dobby.
Good evening. I'm Dobby Wilson and I'm here to represent the City, uh, City Council, the City Chamber of Commerce, Series Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Series Community Foundation. We have a mixer this Thursday night, October the twelfth, at five-thirty, right here in the community center, and we wanted to personally invite the City Council and the city staff. That's, and I don't have any complaints, just compliments. Thank you for the direction you're giving to our city.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agend item?
Yeah, Jeanne Akeley, Series. Recently, I read in Series Courier about Fourth Street improvements and, and there was a quote in there, that Toby Wells said it would probably be opened sometime in November, I guess that's right. In the same article, Toby mentioned, I assume these quotations are correct for Toby from the newspaper to Series Courier. It said that Toby said that it would take a good ten years for change to come, even with that street and the improvements in there, because of people not investing in the businesses and improvements and stuff. That's a long time. I don't know what it takes to entice these people to get something done, but it's a long time. And there's people that lived here in Series for a lot longer than me, have only been here twenty-eight years. I know some of you guys who got family go back to the horse and buggy days, I think. But anyway, there hasn't been much done in all this time, you know, there's been, oh, let's call it, new meat coming through City Council for many, many years and decades and it seems like nothing's ever been done, you know? It just stays, yeah, we got some shopping and, you know, this is going to save us, that's going to save us, but we don't get down, and I've been up here before and explained it, we don't get down to the communities. And one of the things we don't have is code enforcement. And I know, I've talked to Frank, Frank's going to retire, I've talked to people that, you know, the police officers that, that helped him through the past and the present and stuff. It's not enough, you know? And if we're going to keep getting money from these different businesses coming in here, we have to earmark some money that stays for particular items only. It has to be code enforcement, fire department, police department. I know the budget there is, is way up there and we're already spending a lot of money, but code enforcement is one on a high priority. You know, people do what they want to do here, you know, and, and at the very end of this all thing, maybe we should make Series a sanctuary city for people to move here, knowing you can live any way you want with little or no enforcement. Maybe you guys have seen some of this. I know Linda Rhino has a heads up on this, I don't know about anybody else, but we need to change. It's getting too late. Some of these people have been here, living here for years, the next thing they're going to see, they've been having this hope hung up above their head for years, the only thing that they're going to see is death. Death's going to come first before they clean up the city and without code enforcement, we can't do that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agend item?
Good evening, Joe Spanney, Series Professional Firefighters, Local thirty-six, thirty-six. In partnership with the City of Series and the Series Fire Department, we are wearing our pink T-shirts for the month of October for breast cancer awareness. We are selling, also selling these shirts for fifteen dollars apiece and all of our profits go to the Alum Cancer Endowment down in Turlock. They put that money towards some of their programs, including low-cost and no-cost mammograms for low-income individuals. So, some of the things we've also been doing is we are hosting community events. We had our Froya with a firefighter this last week at Supermoms Frozen Yogurt, where we interact with the community, have some frozen yogurt, discussion, show them the fire apparatus, sell some T-shirts hopefully. And the other event that we are doing, which is actually happening right now until nine o'clock tonight, is the La Mornita Hot Pink Restaurant Server. So, we, we wear our pink T-shirts, we serve some of the food with the individuals that work there at Lamo, and we also have our shirts for sale there. What we'd like to do is give you guys all T-shirts and formally invite you all to the event tonight, that goes until nine o'clock.
And I, and I was there earlier, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council on a non-agend item?
Yeah, my name is Lee Brant and I just kind of wanted to give you guys an update on the two committees I'm on. One is the Centennial Committee, we're meeting monthly, things are moving right along. You know, we've got things in the works, we're trying to make up our ideas, you know, make decisions and Toby's right in the middle of it, you know, and of course, my wife is right in the middle of it, too. We've got some exciting things coming up, you know, so it should be, should be a fun year next year, you know, with certain activities and hopefully everything pans out. And then we're working on, we're still working on the water tower, you know, we understand it's going to take a while, you know, we got our fish loki doki to run our money through whatever it is that Dobby's doing, I don't know, I don't have a clue, you know, I just hold on to the wheel. But I just want to let you guys know that everything is coming along, you know, we're working on everything. So, if you have any questions, we have a workshop on the twenty-second at Village Chapel from one to three, that's for the, for kind of like brainstorming, for fundraising for the, for the water tower. So, that's it, you know, if you guys want to join us and help us, please feel free.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Bridget Luddy and I am successfully recently living in Series for the last two years. The reason I'm here, I wasn't going to speak because I understand that this particular topic will not be on tonight's agenda, but I just want to kind of throw out some ideas. I'm the founder of Bibby's Chocolates and we are out of Modesto and we currently fulfill up in northern McHenry area. But we want to start to look at Series for our, our products, our chocolate products that we typically sell to sports teams, major sports teams, we have sixteen NFL teams, Major League Baseball, and currently, we're in discussions with the Canadians and up there in Canada with the Raptors, as long as the US dollar stays lower than the Canadian dollar. But the reason I'm here tonight is, and I'll try to make this brief, when this subject comes up, I'd like an opportunity to speak because I think I have a lot to say about this issue of the city considering cannabis manufacturing here in Series. And this is really close to my heart for a couple of reasons. Five years ago, you couldn't have told me that I would be interested in this, in this topic. I'm in sixty and been there, done that, but we had one of our brokers in Denver and next thing I know, we got a call that says we have to have a discussion, they want to bring your chocolate to, to Colorado for cannabis. And it was a conference call and we all laughed. I mean, it was really pretty funny, but fast forward, we agreed that we would spend time to be diligent and look into it because we approach our chocolate from a science standpoint and we expected that, we knew nothing, and we spent the last four years doing that. We've spoken to some of the top researchers in Israel, Britain, and we have done a lot of speaking to vets, a lot of veterans from Sacramento all the way to Bakersfield. We've done a ton of speeches to patients, especially in the baby boomer section. We ended up getting involved because we saw a real problem in the edibles market, which current statistics say seventy-eight percent of this market in California is going to be edibles. But based on our experience for the past four and a half, almost five years, I was really glad to hear that Series is going to really take a hard look and ask some really hard questions. And I applaud you for that because there are really serious questions that need to be asked. There are some small companies such as ourselves that would like to, if we're going to continue to really throw ourselves into cannabis chocolate manufacturing, that we would like to be considered and we'd like to understand the process that you guys are going through. But we do have a lot to say and recently, I was up in Sacramento talking to the powers to be that are going to oversee the cannabis market here in California, and I didn't walk away and they heard my message pretty clear. When it comes to edibles, there's an issue. You cannot allow in this state for dosing to be stated at, let's say, ten, ten milligrams per dose. And then as a state say, it's okay to have a variance of fifteen percent. I'm a four-time cancer survivor and I will tell you this, that if I'm in the middle of radiation or chemo and I don't want to take opioids, I've been there, and if I want to seek some other methodology of pain relief or nausea relief and I go into dispensary and that's the dispensary, budtender, nine times out of ten, they don't know jack about edibles. And my problem is, is that I'm hoping that whoever deals with the state from the city, that you will please ask them not to approve a fifteen percent variance. It will hurt people, it will make them vulnerable, and there are companies like ours who have a strict science process so that our, so that we're asking the state to, to ask edible companies to do what we're doing, to have a very precise variance. And I'm speaking not only to this City Council because I live here and I'm hoping that we can get permitted here eventually, instead of Oakland, would prefer not to have to drive to Oakland, but that if we do this, perhaps some of us who've been in this for a while can really add some information so that as you guys progress forward, we can help you move in a more beneficial way to the community. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agend item? Okay. With that, we'll move on to, we have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening. Conflict of interest declaration, is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the eight consent calendar items or one discussion item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recavation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like an item pulled from the consent calendar? Okay, anyone in the audience?
Eight.
I'm sorry?
Eight.
Eight? Okay. With that, I'll look for direction on the other items.
Move for approval of one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Okay, Dave, did you want to come to the podium? Item number eight, resolution number two thousand seventeen dash oh-nine-oh, awarding the construction contract for the Mitchell Road slash TID main bike and pedestrian path, Phase Four, to George Reed, Inc., and authorize a ten percent contingency, approve the budget amendment, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract.
Yeah, I see you're in the process of adding on the bike pass, but you're not taking care of the ones you got. They're starting to become dumping grounds and the weeds are growing and, and, and a lot of times, the ones I've ridden on, that's got tree branches hanging over them, you got to play dodgeball with the, with the limbs. When they clean out, when I see the people doing gardening along those things, they need to do the trees, too. But sooner or later, I see them, I see a tire, I see bags of garbage, I just wonder on some of the garbage if neighbors aren't just throwing them over their fences because those driving around looking for a place to dump their garbage doesn't, I don't think take their time to stop and, and walk halfway down the bike path to dump their, dump their garbage. So, we're, we're starting to have an issue on, on what we got and we need to start taking care of what we have. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on this item? Councilmember Klein?
Mr. Wells, I've got a question for you, bringing that up about the bike pass. You know, we do have something in place that we have a few parks that haven't been built because of maintenance and upkeep, and yet, you know, we've done quite a fit of bike passes, is there anything set aside or preventative maintenance or anything like that on any of the bike paths?
Are you referring to lighting and landscaping district or that, you're talking about a funding mechanism or?
Funding mechanism or is the, the, you know, how we have contracted out right now with, with Lawn Mower Service, is there anything with the city staff as far as regular maintenance or, or patrolling the bike paths to keep them clean of debris?
It's part of the normal maintenance process for city staff. We don't, we don't contract for that separately, but we could, it's just a cost difference. Again, it's a general fund function, it's, the construction of these park, these bike paths are done with grant funding. This is all, for the most part, about eighty percent is CMAC, congestion mitigation, air quality money, that we apply for and it takes about three to four years for those funding sources to come in. If we don't build those bike paths when we said we would, we lose that, that funding. So, the council's worried about it. From grand scheme of things, the bike path maintenance is lower than a park, for sure, but there is still maintenance associated with, but again, limited resources, staff does the best that we can, but at the same time, if, if council is concerned about that, then we lose this money, we would not build a park.
Well, and, and my question is, you know, Mr. Pratt brought it up, and my question is, we have maintenance guys that drive around on the weekends and, and check the dumpsters at American Legion Hall and make sure everything's cleaned up and everything around it, how often do they, do they drive the bike paths and make sure the debris is picked up around the bike paths?
I'll, Jeremy, I mean, I don't know the specific details, it's, it's just a matter of the specific bike path. It all can be a little bit different unless you've got some better information on that.
No, they're, they're all handled, handled individually and different, you know, if we see a lot of garbage pickup on some of them, we'll pay more attention to those. The guys on the weekends are pretty much putting out fires, they spend the majority of their time at Smyrna, River Bluff, because of the events that are going on out there. The, the guys that are out picking up for like Legion Hall and whatnot on the weekends, the custodians, usually after events, the night after, the night before, similar to this facility as well.
So, it's, a, way I'm interpreting it is basically as, as need be basis?
Yeah, and then Howard Training Center is supposed to be going through on a monthly basis as well. So, Howard Training Centers is, is going through picking up the large bulky stuff, we've got a lot of, we have a lot of issues right now with vandalism where there's a lot of shopping carts that we're picking up ourselves, there's a lot of garbage being dumped that they're spending a lot of time picking up. The street crews going through picking up huge blight issues when they're in those areas, they'll pick those up as well. There's just a, in the last six months, there's been a, a large volume of trash being dumped and unfortunately, that's where we're spending a lot of our time. So, Howard Training Centers are under contract to take care of these things, so they go through and they pick up the trash and help us out, knock down some of the bigger weeds, try to take care of some of the suckers that are growing, but, you know, I've knocked on, I've knocked on probably twenty-five doors in the last six months saying, please stop throwing your trash over the back fence. We're fighting an uphill battle.
Oh, I, I know there's neighbors around me that, dumping their grass, they continue to dump their grass into the street. They think, you know, Modesto City was, was taking it that way. I mean, and...
We've got a lot of vandalism, too, and on the, the lights that we put up through there, you know, they've gone through and ripped all the electrical out of some of the lighting struck, the lighting strings. Now, that was very costly, done that a couple of times, we've gone through and poured concrete in the boxes, it's all, put out this fire and you got three more.
Okay, just had to ask a question.
Understood.
Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, I think what's happened here, you know, these bike, these bike paths are canal banks and these canal banks are now accessible to where it's safer for bikes and that sort of thing for people to walk, they don't have to walk in the dirt, but I can tell you, the issues have always been there. Now, you're seeing them because you got, you're on a bike and you're able to get around different areas because the fact of the matter is that people are dumping stuff over the fences where there's houses, you're giving them much better access to leave carts, if you will, they don't have to, you know, you're going to see it, you're going to see a lot more of it because you're on a bike path. Mr. Pratt, it sounds like you want to make a statement there.
You know, I rode those canals ever since I was that high.
Correct.
And basically, you're seeing most of this because of the growing pains of the cities. And just because you got a bike path there, I didn't see that stuff before the bike paths started coming in there, and I don't see a whole lot more people using those things just because they're there. I don't always use those because it's, it's, it's a pain.
Well, if people would do their justice and do the right things, we wouldn't have these problems with people dumping over the fences, dumping their trash, throwing over the fences, but I can guarantee it, if one of the fences are disturbed over there by one of the people that are dumping over there or somebody else hits the fence that goes through on a, on a vehicle, I can guarantee you that it's our problem. I can guarantee you that.
Well, I think, you know, the thing is because they're more out of sight and, and basically, the only one's going to say anything is people like me, me, that sees this stuff.
I don't disagree.
And basically, a lot of the, a lot of those houses that's got the small fences, they, I'm pretty sure that a lot of stuff that they're dumping because they're too lazy to take that stuff to the front, putting it in the right, in the correct barrels.
Absolutely right. It's unfortunate, people need to be trained differently, it's unfortunate. It doesn't just happen on the bike paths, it happens on the streets, as Councilman Klein said. I drive around, I see, you know, dumps basically on the streets.
You ought to see this, some of the stuff I see, that somebody did their, like, most lately, did their showers and the old shower stall is in somebody's orchard.
Right. Yeah, it's unfortunate. It's an issue.
Yeah.
But I wish people just would create better habits, you know, we can only, we can only do so much, we only have so much money in our general fund to be able to, you know, do what we can do. I mean, what do you want to do? You want to have police and fire or do you want to be picking up these dumps all the time from people that are being so disrespectful to their neighbors and to our city? So, you know, I just have real issues with that.
And they need to be potty trained.
Maybe, you're right.
Thank you. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to adopt resolution two thousand seventeen zero ninety.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. We have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearings and no new business, we have one discussion item, the TOT committee discussion. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, this evening, bringing an item back per council direction for a discussion on a committee or other item for opportunities for expenditure concepts that the council has brought up. Just a little background, the city has had a TOT, or a hotel tax as referred to since nineteen sixty-four. For the most part, that tax was at a five percent rate. In two thousand and two, we attempted to increase that rate from five percent to eight percent and that ballot measure failed. In two thousand and fifteen, after some discussion from the council in two thousand and fourteen, an item was placed on the ballot, Measure E, that increased the TOT here locally from five percent to ten percent. That was approved by the voters with a fifty-seven point eight percent vote in favor of the increase. The effective date of the TOT tax was July first, two thousand and sixteen, so we now have had one full fiscal year with that increase in place. For fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, total revenues were two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. So, overall, the, currently, we have the two hotels in town, there are approximately a hundred and nine rooms, obviously, there's a little variation there in terms of when they're doing remodels and that type of thing, but that kind of gives you an idea, there are some plans for additional hotels if other developers are successful in their plans, no, no city plans, but developers do have plans for some additional hotels, obviously, it would make a significant change to that revenue source. So, this item was brought to, brought up by council in February, one, one meeting and then returned again at the second meeting, looking for discussion, so at this point, I'll turn it over for council to provide staff with direction on how you'd like to proceed with this item.
Okay. Councilmember DeRocset?
Yeah, I remember a little more a year ago that I was one of the votes that stated, you know, this is general fund money, and it is general fund money. After seeing it for the last year, you know, having two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars is obviously a, a good chunk of change, same time, too, maybe more hotels will be coming in, but I, I think it's probably time that we commit ourselves to having a, a group of people, obviously, there's a lot of people from Shane Parsons, Lisa Montero, Eric Ingerston, not to bring people's names...
to bring people's names up, that there was a thought process that some of this money could be used to entice other businesses, maybe come in town or, or maybe have some sort of our own grant writing system. So, you know, at the very end of the day, it still comes back to us in regards to if we want to spend this money or not, whether there's a committee made or there's people that, you know, had a, a big part of this transient occupancy tax. I, I just think right now would, would be a good time to, to at least look at it, so.
Okay. Vice Mayor Klein?
Well, you know, when I, when I brought this back, you know, and it was for a TOT committee and, you know, after further, further discussion and, and thinking of the situation, I mean, the direction I'd like to see is, is since the citizens of Series, you know, supported this thing, I would like to see a percentage of it go back. And when I say a percentage, it could be three percent, five percent, to, to be budgeted into the recreation department, not for personnel, not for scholarships, but basically to help promote the city, the concerts in the park, the family camp out, the Halloween festival, the, the Christmas festival. I mean, they're on, they, they do it right now on a tight budget and this would, would have, would, would reach out to a, a broader spectrum of citizens within the Series. It would, it would, it would allow the recreation department to update some of their, their, their themed decorations and, you know, possibly, you know, the concerts in the park are getting bigger, maybe a movie night, but, you know, we, we could at least hit a broader spectrum of people. And when I say doing it by a percentage, if we, two hundred and twenty thousand this year, next year, let's say we have a little down year, they don't get, you know, let's say we do ten percent, so they're gonna get twenty-two thousand dollars. And if it goes down to a hundred and eighty, they're only gonna get, you know, eighteen thousand dollars. And, and, and then ten percent is, is a big, is a big sum, but it's easier for figuring math. I mean, even five percent, you know, would be added to their thing so they can, they can reach out to a, a broader spectrum of, of citizens. So that was my idea of trying to bring this back for discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino?
Well, I, I hear council members talk about promoting Series, but I think the bigger issue is you can promote Series all you want, but when people come to Series and they see the state of disrepair, I don't think that's gonna help us at all. I think, to me, we need to have another code enforcement officer that can go out there and actively help to clean up the city because, again, you can promote all you want and the first time people come to Series that haven't been here and they look around, they're gonna be like, why do I want to come back here? I mean, I'd rather go to Turlock, stay right off of the freeway, there's, there's restaurants I can walk to, it's clean. And in all honesty, I hear from people all the time about how our city looks. And I think I would rather see, if there's money put into promoting Series, I'd really like to see us put some money towards hiring another code enforcement officer.
Well, one of the comments that, and, and I, I hear all of the council members' comments and I, I think they're very good. I think they're all very valid and, and when I originally brought this up, my thought and hope was that we would create a committee that would include citizens that voted for it as well as, you know, maybe a council member or two, to come up with ideas such as, you know, code enforcement, such as a percentage for, you know, I don't know if you want to call it business development or whatever, but, but there's, it's a lot more than just us saying, this is what we think we need to, to do with the money because there's obviously five different opinions up here as well as all the citizens. But there's also a question is, how does that get administered? For how long? What would it be? I, I, my thought was and hope was is, we're still the ultimate decision makers of that, but what would it hurt if we solicited input from the people that are, that helped make this? Whereas, again, we, we may take and do something different from it, but I, I just felt that, you know, there's a lot of great ideas. I bet there's even more than, than we can even think of here. And maybe it's a combination of one year it's gonna be for a code enforcement and, and a small percentage is used for, I, I don't know, some, something that you had described. And maybe another year it's for something else. When we, when we move forward with this, we, we, we did it with the intent that, hey, this is a tax that not necessarily our residents are paying. So, again, my goal would still be that I, I'd, I'd like to solicit any and all ideas and then we can make a decision where we go from there. But, you know, I, I'm, I'm open. I'm not gonna let that stop. If, 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 if all of you have an idea that, you know, how you want to use it, then that's great. But, but, but I, I personally don't like the way that it's being currently used. I, I, I think, I don't think we're using it for code enforcement. I don't think we're using it for any of the, the things you, so I, I think we're probably all in agreement that a change needs to be made, but we've got to get consensus and I'm interested in hearing what everybody has to say. So before I do that, let me ask Councilmember Lane?
Well, I have a hundred different things I could use it for. But I do think the committee's the right way to go and I think that everybody up here has brought some value points and, and I, and I think it's a big discussion item and I agree. I think we should look at another way, excuse me, of using it, but I think the committee formed of citizens, excuse me. And I don't know, I've, I've heard, you know, that maybe one council member would be on that committee or something, but, or not. But I, I would, it would be interesting. I think it would give us all more insight of what the citizens in this committee, you know, I would, I would suspect they wouldn't be doing it just to, to, for their own self. They're gonna go out there and talk to folks and find out really what's gonna be best suited for this committee or for this, this TOT tax if, if, you know, any ideas that they would bring back. But to me, I think it would make more sense to do that instead of us deciding on, you know, I, I like the code enforcement thing. I like what Mike said. And I like what you said about, you know, we'll put it here this year and next year, but, you know, that's, that's kind of, you know, I'm, who knows, right? There's so many things we could do with it. But, but since the citizens, you know, voted for this, right, I think it's important that they have a voice in this and that, that we bring it back and ultimately, like you said, Mayor, we're gonna make the decision on how it's used, but it would be real interesting to see what they're thinking and, and what they may bring back. So I would definitely support a committee.
Mr. Wells?
Sorry, I just want to clarify a couple of things. One, you know, as it is currently included in the budget, it is revenue. So the TOT tax is revenue on the revenue side. We don't spend that at a revenue count, right? So we have income out of the TOT and we have expenditures. So to the point, you know, a percentage is going to all city functions as it's currently appropriated in the budget. So really what you're talking about is an expenditure, changing the expenditures, and we can do that at the budget or look for committee for recommendations on how to do expenditures. So just wanted to clarify that. Also, the difference between having a council member on that committee is kind of the difference in structure. You know, if a council member's on there, likely we'd want that to be an ad hoc committee so we recognize it from this council to do that versus if you're just wanting, you know, residents to get together, it's kind of a different structure, à la what we've done with the water tank. So kind of two different structures depending on who's on that committee. So just wanted to make that point.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Mr. Wells? What would be the annual cost of code enforcement?
The total budget or a?
No, just for salary, for benefits?
One employee?
For one employee?
Right around a hundred thousand.
How much?
One hundred thousand.
Okay.
Ballpark, depending on what level and where they were hired.
I would think that we need to have some sort of an ad hoc. I, I think maybe two council members, oh, because we're talking about spending money that's the city's money, different than what the water tower is going through at this present time. That's more of a, you know, community member thing, I think, and not that this isn't either, but at least two council members could help run the meeting.
And I would volunteer to do that.
And I'd do that with you.
But I think other than just citizens, we should have some business owners as well, not just citizens.
Sure. And maybe even a couple of people that work for the city.
What I might suggest, I'm gonna open it up for the public here and just to speak, but based upon that, again, I, I think it's a blank canvas. I would like the two council members that would like to sit on there to make recommendations, whether you want five people, seven people, I mean, it, it, it's up to you guys and whether they're, you know, business owners or citizens and a combination of both or whatever. I, I think the whole goal is to draw out ideas and, and different things because I, I'm willing to bet there's somebody will come up with an idea that none of us have thought of and we might say, hey, that's a pretty good idea. You know, I, it's probably gonna be pretty hard because I know we're a pretty smart group up here, but anyway.
Well, the next question would be, would anyone apply for it? Because with Measure H, I think we're having a problem filling our vacancies.
Correct. We've got two vacancies currently. We have had it open for over a month. We've only gotten one applicant. So it's one of my information items, is, you know, we're, we're extending that period so we do have an opening there on Measure H. We have had some challenges of getting applicants on the Measure H committee. This may be different, but we have had, you know, some limited.
You never know. I mean, I, I would say we give it a shot and see what happens, but at this point, I want to open it up to anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item, if you would.
Lisa Montero Moore, Measure, what letter were we? Measure T?
E.
I forget my alphabet these days, proponent. So I'm very happy to hear the council's taking a step forward conversation about what to do with the funds rather than let them sit as a revenue source because of, there's no community we have that has all the money they need to run all the programs. But when we took a step forward, I say we, the council had a vision, they wanted to try the TOT tax, and I was on the previous council and we were not successful because we, as council members, didn't do anything to make it work. It takes the community to help make this supportive. And so we were able to have a community effort to get this over the line and be able to bring the funds back to the community. So I'm very supportive of an activity that allows the community to help drive its, its, its use, not just for programs that are necessary, for code enforcement or recreation department, but maybe other some creative ways for businesses, small businesses, kind of like a, a handout. We haven't had opportunities in the revenue of our community in many years for those types of small business enhancing type programs or other types of things to help maybe spruce something up and maybe make it a unique one-time experience. So I think there is a lot of merit in that. I do think there would be people in the community interested in serving, having been a previous person on Measure H and only being allowed to serve one term limits the ability to reapply for those types of things. So I understand the need to get community volunteers, people to show up, but I know how hard it is to get people at a council meeting, so I appreciate both sides of this. But I appreciate the council taking a step forward and trying to have a unique way to look at this and make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, John Warren. And code enforcement is a priority with, of mine, and I think the council has some good ideas. Something to think about, rather than spending a hundred thousand dollars a year on a full-time employee, you need to look at your retirement community and find some people out there that are already retired, that have their medical care taken care of, their retirement taken care of. So you don't have the expense with a retired individual working on a part-time basis as you would with a younger person in the middle of their, of their career. A lot of times, there's some value to that with a little age and a little seniority. Finding the right fit might take a little while, but the city right now is trying to find the right fit and I think they're having a difficult time. So once you have a permanent person that's well-established in that position, a couple of part-time people might be a consideration that you would think about and also would save the, save the city some funds for not having to fund a full-time employee. Just something to think about.
Councilmember Rhino?
Toby, whatever happened with our volunteer code enforcement program? It kind of started and fizzled?
Never really got any applicants. There was a couple of applicants who didn't work out so well and it, it died for lack of interest.
Hi, Shane Parsons. Like to commend the council for considering this. I was kind of, it was something I really pushed for, the TOT, and I think sometimes, you know, I mean, I don't disagree with it that some money needs to go to the recreation department, but if we can promote out-of-towners to come here, and I know maybe code enforcement's good, they bring the money to the hotels. So as long as we can keep the hotels full by having some functions where out-of-towners come, that fund will only build. If we get some new hotels, it'll just get bigger. But just to, you know, I mean, it's already going to the recreation department and that sort of thing out of the general fund, I assume. Now, I don't know that giving them more money is gonna bring more people to our hotels. So that's just one consideration, I would think, but thanks for considering a committee.
Okay, anyone else? All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the council, see if there's any more discussion or recommendation.
What I've heard so far as a discussion item, in order for us to form a committee and accept applications, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we would need to bring that back as an action item for the council to take action, to form the committee and set the process for application and, and that type of thing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, so at this point, I'm hearing, unless there's any objections, do we have two council members that are interested?
Yes.
Already? No objection?
No objection.
None here either. Okay, with that, then, Mr. Wells, can you get with the council members and?
Yes, meet with both of them and then we'll bring back an item to form the committee and put the criteria for selecting interested people.
Okay. All right, with that, we will move to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Hearing none, reports? I have nothing to report this evening. Councilmember Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Nothing.
Go Dodgers, right? Okay. Councilmember Lane?
Nothing.
Councilmember DeRocette?
Nothing.
Ms. Dean? Tom?
I have to report, Mayor.
Mr. Wells?
Several items of, kind of, of note, a couple of them we've already mentioned this evening, the, the fire dinner that's going on. So we'll go over to La Marita when we're done here, get some, some good food. Also, the community meeting regarding our water rates. We've scheduled a Saturday afternoon meeting so people can gather some information on what's going on with our water rates. That is scheduled for October twenty-first, Saturday afternoon, here in the community center from one to three P.M. As I mentioned, the Measure H does have a current vacancy. We're extending that opening for another week until Friday of this week to see if we can get another applicant. If not, then we'll probably move forward with appointing the one individual and to continue the application period so that we'll have somebody on board for that application that would be, our next meeting would be November fifteenth. So again, if you know of anybody interested in the Measure H committee, we'd like to see them apply as soon as possible. The school board, our two plus two plus two meeting is tomorrow morning, so Councilmember DeRocette and Councilmember Lane are scheduled to attend that meeting tomorrow morning. We do have the joint meeting with the, with the school district scheduled for November eighth. That's on your calendar as well, just a reminder on that. Centennial committee is referenced again this evening, is meeting tomorrow. And one thing the city staff is really excited about, our new website is nearly complete and we'll be revealing that and going live with the new website on Thursday of this week. So we look forward to the functionality that our new website will provide us. And also, last thing I wanted to reference, the California Transportation Commission is having their monthly meeting in Modesto in October on the eighteenth. So we sent that invitation out, there'll be a, an opening, a little gala for the members of that commission, and we invite folks to come out and see that because it's one of the rare times that a statewide agency comes into our area to conduct their meeting. So let's see, items at the seating.
Westbrook. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick brief update on Fourth Street. As, if you've been out there lately, you can see the concrete coming out of the ground, you kind of see some shape coming to the project out there, it's kind of exciting. This week, we'll have continued concrete work, subgrade work will also continue. Next week, the pavers will arrive on site. We'll start with the parking areas installing pavers the following week. The structural, superstructures for the arches will be showing up on that, that following The structural, superstructures for the arches will be showing up on that, that following week, it'll be kind of exciting, so.
All right. Brett? Tracy?
Hello? It's really loud. Okay, so, three events this month that everyone in the room is invited to. As Dovey mentioned, the Series Community Foundation will be hosting their first mixer ever here at the Series Community Center upstairs this Thursday from 5:30 to 7:30. Please stop by, show your support. We'll have finger foods and drinks, and we'll be talking about the art program that we have in the community center, as well as ways you can get involved and donate to the foundation. On October 21st, it's a Saturday, I believe, we will have dinner and a movie in the Whitmore Park. It's being put on by the Series Chamber of Commerce, and begins at 5:30 p.m., $30 per person, $50 per couple. You can come out, eat dinner outside. We'll be catering that with Pasta Pronto, is that the name of the restaurant, downtown Fourth Street? So, it's a brand-new restaurant for the city of Series, and he will be catering, and your price includes your meal, popcorn, the movie, and then we will have drinks available as well. And then on the 31st is our annual Halloween Festival here at the Series Community Center. It's a free event, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Everyone is welcome to attend. We have a variety of activities going on inside of our community center, so we encourage you to bring your kids. We don't give candy here, but certainly there's plenty of time after the event is over at 8:00 p.m. to go trick-or-treating, but it's just a fun, safe event that we've been doing for over 20 years. So, thank you. Such a good question. What is it? It's an Alfred Hitchcock movie. I do know that, but it's not one I've seen.
They'll keep you in suspense. All right, Jeremy? Supervisor DiMartini? I think?